Okay, well, welcome to the August 1st Planning Commission meeting. All members are present. That being said, will you rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission on items that are on the consent calendar. Requests for future items, future agenda items, new items, or items not on the agenda. Public comments for the scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. To accommodate those speaking in person and via Zoom, we will call upon those in first, in person first, and then to Zoom. If necessary, we will repeat the process. If you are here to speak in person, please fill out a speaker's card with the administrator, a secretary, on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you wish to speak via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom during this item, during this item to speak under the public comments. Persons are required to limit their remarks to five minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson, subject to approval of the Planning Commission, or a reduction of time is stated by the chairperson, subject to approval of the Planning Commission. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission chairperson, and if relevant, they may direct them to the appropriate staff member. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. We would like to acknowledge that we have zero general public comments that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Copies of these comments would have been made available on the city's website on the Planning Commission's agendas page, if there were any. Finally, please note that the Commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within ten calendar days.
Chairperson Roberts, I have three in-person speakers. First one is Clifton Fagerquist.
The city manager, planning manager, and city attorney seem determined to provide Mr. McCauley with a sweetheart deal in allowing the proposed bar restaurant at the closed Deer Ridge Golf Course clubhouse to skip the regular vetting process required for obtaining a conditional use permit. Instead, a twenty-three, a twenty-three-year-old conditional use permit for the clubhouse is being used to rubber stamp the proposed bar restaurant. The city is deliberately cutting corners for local businessmen for the purpose to raise tax revenue for the city. If this project is allowed to continue, we will likely have incidents similar to what transpired on July 14th at Chili Court, in which a homicide occurred during a for-profit party in a residential neighborhood. When will the city learn that it is shortsighted and foolish to allow a bar restaurant to operate in a residential neighborhood close to an elementary school? Is our city manager so desperate to raise tax revenue that he will cut corners and make sweetheart deals with local businessmen, even if it puts Deer Ridge residents and their children in jeopardy? Why was the Planning Commission bypassed on, on the permitting approval process for McCauley's bar restaurant? Where was a public notification on this issue? Where is the transparency? Why did this issue not go before the Planning Commission for a vote? Where is the Planning Commission on this issue? They have gone strangely silent and seem to be skirting their responsibilities to go on the record in making an informed decision on this important Deer Ridge issue. Where is the promised agenda item voted on June, June 22nd on this issue? All I have seen thus far from the city is stonewalling.
Next speaker I have is Dan Nogar.
Good evening. Last time I gave the flag salute was sixteen years ago when I was teaching third graders in Antioch, so it felt good to stand up again. I'm here. I emailed the Commission today with some concerns. I'm one of four homeowners on Randy Way that are concerned with some issues with the St. James Court development, and we wanted to get ahead, if we could, of the process, not having had any meetings or, or insight from the city or from the developers. So when they started moving things around, we thought we better come in. And I have, Mr. Denjrank and I have talked with Sarah Uwiler and planning and a couple of the people in the engineering department. So I may be getting the cart before the horse, but I would like to talk and bring a couple of things to your attention. One of our concerns was having to do with drainage of stormwater. We are flooded during the winter, and the wall that will go around the St. James development is going to impact the first four houses on Randy Way going east from Minnesota. And we have seen the last map that indicated that that was being addressed. We do not know what the height of the wall is going to be, nor, nor what it's going to look like, but I have a concern, we all do, about the location of the two-story homes. When Pulte was developing Carmella Estates ten years ago, all the one-acre homeowners made a, an agreement, and he stuck to it, that he would not build a two-story house adjacent to a one-acre parcel. And we haven't had the chance to, to talk yet with the developers, Mr. David Romo and his partner, Paul, I can't think of his last name, but we would like to do so, and I think we have a meeting set coming up. I'm on lot four of their plan, and they have two stories homes built, are set to be built on lot four, five, and seven. Being that the slope of the land has to facilitate water draining back to Minnesota, those homes, two-story homes would be sitting on five foot of fill to begin with, which would make a two-story house awfully high, like a skyscraper looking down on our yard. So I was, I wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm hoping that maybe the developers will see it our, our way and perhaps relocate some of those two-story homes, because they sit on the highest part of that St. James development. We have also issues with the wall. We're hoping for conformity in the wall so that it'll tie in aesthetically with the Carmella Estates wall, and also that we're, I suppose that's pretty much what I had to say. One other thing, and I'll, I'll never think of it in the next forty-one seconds. So anyway, thank you very much.
Next, we have Mike Denjrank.
Yes, I'm Mike Denjrank. I live right next to Dan on Randy Way, and I'll try not to repeat too much. I agree with everything he said. We've been waiting for this project to happen many, many years. Neff, Bailey Neff owned it, and I remember coming down twenty years ago and talking about what we're looking at there, too. But I have been looking on it online on the city website, and so there was a space between our property and the new project that looked like it would take care of the drainage and everything. But when I came down to say, what is in that space? What exactly are they doing? What is the fence going to look like? How high is it and all the rest? It had changed dramatically from what was online. So we are concerned about what's going to go. It sounds like they've revised it, and that's being taken care of, but we still don't know what the wall looks like, how high it is. We assume it's going to be the same as what's there now. It's around two sides, and you're expecting it on the front on Minnesota. We assume it's going to be on our side as well, but we don't know. And then the two-story issue is a big one. Again, Carmella Estates agreed not to put any two stories on. It's a thirty, we understand the zoning is thirty, thirty feet limit, but they're putting five-foot of dirt in first, so it's thirty-five, looking down into our yards. What's our, what's our fence going to look like? Are there, who's going to be looking down into our yards and so forth? So we wanted to come down because we weren't sure if we need to say something now and get ahead of this. I did talk to David Romo, who is either an owner or a developer, I'm not sure, on the project. He was not happy to hear from me late in the game. He's tired of neighbors who think developers have deep projects, pockets, and he didn't think we had much of a say. But I assured him that we didn't want to slow him up. We want him to do well. We just want to know what's going to go on behind us and what, what we're going to be looking at after all these years of living there. So thank you for your time, and if you would let us know a little bit what the process is so we make sure that we're not late for something, that would, that would be great. Thank you very much.
At this time, I have no other speaker cards and no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Our, our next item is the consent calendar. There is one set of minutes for the regular meeting on June 20th, 2023. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Where am I? Oh. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to our business item. Our next item is a consideration of a request to amend the design review for the maintenance facility at the Brentwood Golf Course, and Ms. Sarah Uwilla will present.
Hi, good evening. I'll just give a moment for my screen to load. Good evening, Planning Commission, applicant, members of the public. Before you tonight is an item for a design review amendment to request to modify the previous design review approval, which allowed the construction of a 4,000-square-foot golf cart and maintenance building, exterior golf cart parking, and a new putting green, along with construction of bioretention basins and a relocation of the existing above-ground gasoline feeling tank, all located within an approximately 26,460-square-foot fenced enclosure. The site is located on the corner of Balfour Road and Somerset Drive on a portion of the existing and long-developed Brentwood Golf Course. The location within the golf course is shown on the screen indicated in a red rectangle here. On August 17th, 2021, the Planning Commission approved a design review application for a new 4,000-square-foot replacement cart barn and maintenance building. On September 20th, 2022, the Planning Commission approved a one-year time extension of the valid, of the project, valid until September 2023. In March of this year and prior to the expiration of the time extension, the applicant submitted this request to modify the approval. On the screen is the previously approved site plan, which is a modification currently being requested to eliminate the building shown here in yellow. The current request proposes to build all other aspects of the previously approved project, with the exception of the construction of the maintenance building itself. Instead, the applicant proposes to store materials and equipment behind a chain-link fence with green slats, as was approved per the original Planning Commission approval. The applicant has requested the following modifications to, to the previously include, excuse me, previously approved plans, which includes the elimination of a 4,000-square-foot cart barn or maintenance building, modification of the sliding entrance gate to a swinging gate to access the storage yard, addition of a three-and-a-half-foot wide pedestrian gate, increased fence height from six feet to eight feet in height for additional screening purposes, and the addition of eight new light pole fixtures. Given that the project complies with and is consistent with the general plan, zoning, the intent of the design guidelines, and previously approval, previous approval, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 23-027, approving the Design Review Amendment 20, DR 20-009A2, for the paved outdoor equipment, storage, and maintenance yard. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you have, as is the property owner and other representatives at the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
Yep.
Go ahead.
So the light standards? Why are they twenty-four feet tall for an eight-foot fence?
Sure. I would like to defer to the applicant for the actual explanation on the height. The height does comply with commercial light standard height requirements, so there wasn't a question from staff at that time, but there may be a better explanation from our applicant as to why the height is needed, or, and maybe an explanation as to if they can reduce the height a little bit.
Okay. Do you want to have him answer the question now, or do you want to wait?
That would be up to you guys.
Go ahead.
I'm fine with it. Sir?
My name is Joel Cantor. I'm the architect for the project, and there's Joel Keller over there, who's the advisor, and Rex Chow. I guess I'd have to give to my electrical engineer to say exactly why, but I think it had to do with being able to spread the light out more evenly and less intense.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think there'll probably be more questions, so I don't know if it's easier for you to, it's up to the commission if you want him to take a list of questions and then answer them all at once, or... I see Katie.
Thank you so much. So at this point in the agenda, if we could kind of keep questions for staff and then allow the applicant to have their opportunity to address you, and of course, you can ask them any questions you may have for them at that time. Thank you.
Sir, can I get a clarifying question? So on the design standards for commercial, and I'm not sure if this is the right place. I looked for it, and I was looking at these, the chain-link fence requirement. I was okay with it, with it was also part of a bigger complex, but now it's going to be a standalone facility. In the, in Section 7C, under minimize the visual prominence of service and loading areas, I would consider this a service area. I don't know if that fits the technical definition of this, but it says integrate green walls into the architectural design and landscape of buildings, utilize materials and details which are the same or similar to those on the buildings. Chain-link fencing is not allowed. That's pretty specific, so I'm not, again, not sure if that's the correct area, but that certainly is something, when I reviewed this, kind of popped off the guidelines, and I know they're guidelines, but that's pretty specific.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. So yes, you're referring to the industrial or commercial and industrial design guidelines. So I do have a section in front of me. The way that we've interpreted that section is to apply more to like commercial loading areas, like loading docks or back areas, back lots of commercial buildings. So that standard wasn't applied here. There is an opportunity to allow for chain-link fence through the design review process, which, you know, at the discretion of the Planning Commission, and so that's how we viewed this project.
Okay. Thank you for that. Just for, I get this may end up being a question for the applicant, which, after others have staff questions. The, when I was down there yesterday, there are currently three storage areas, I would call them storage areas, that I assume that most of the equipment would be, that this new area would be stored for. There's golf carts that are within a fenced-off area with a metal fencing, and then there are two chain-link fencing with green netting. It's not like the design of this. Is, through the conversations with the applicant, are those two areas going to go away when this is completed?
Sure, yes, those were for a temporary use, just while they were going through the process of getting approval for a new building or new equipment storage area, so those will be all consolidated into the, the new proposed area for screening purposes. Everything will be in that one area, but we can also verify what the applicant, if, that's my understanding.
Because one of the, one of the storage areas is really not being stored to use equipment. It is a collection of not equipment. I'm going to be nice. It's not, it's not, it has, to me, it has nothing to do with the storage of maintenance equipment or golf carts, and it's in the south side, I would say, the south side of the lot. So obviously, we can address that with the, with the applicant. Just a clarifying question on process. So what happens if, obviously, if it's approved, we know what, what happens. Given that this has come before us now twice since I've been here, what happens if this is denied or sent back to design review as an example? With, because I know they have a time limit. What happens?
Sure, so the existing approval for the building and the enclosure is valid through September. I can get you the date. I think it's around the 20th. So that would be in place until, till the expiration date, at which point then it would expire, they would have to come back in for a new approval, and we would have to, you know, enforce for the, the storage of temporary items in the parking lot through the community enrichment department to get rid of that and make sure they're in compliance.
That's all the questions I have for now.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay.
Sure.
Yes?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Sarah, can you, can you tell us what is the definition of a service area? There's no glossary or anything that says that, and I, I went online and I looked for a definition of a service area, and it's just like a place where you fuel cars, or, you know, like there's all kinds of possible meanings. Can you inform us on what you think the authors of this document meant by a service area?
Sure. If you don't mind, let me take a look at the document and see if there is any definitions in there. So if you don't mind giving me just a minute, I can take a look. Yeah. It doesn't appear that we have a definition section of that, of our design guidelines. I, you know, wasn't here when the design guidelines are put in place, and maybe our planning manager can speak a little bit more on this, but we, we've talked about that area, including the back-of-house kind of for buildings, so loading, drop-off, pickup areas for commercial buildings, not necessarily this associated with a maintenance yard for the golf course, and additionally, screening for utilities and things like that, that may be at the back-of-house, or trash enclosures is typically what we would apply that standard to. But Eric, our planning manager, may be able to speak a little bit more on that from the past as well.
Good evening, Chairperson Roberts, members of the commission. I don't have a whole lot more to add other than what Sarah just mentioned, but yeah, we have applied it in the past more to like commercial and retail areas, as she mentioned back-of-house. Golf courses are obviously a little bit more rare of a use. There's three in, in Brentwood. This doesn't prohibit the commission from discussing the validity of the design with the chain link, and if the commission feels it's more appropriate to go with a different design, different material, that's well within your purview. But again, we've, we've treated it more from a commercial retail standpoint than a, than a golf course standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anything in the commercial design guidelines anywhere that allows for a chain-link fence for any use?
I'm not aware that there is an area in the design guidelines that calls out permitted or, I guess, encouraged as design materials. However, we do have our accessory structures section of our zoning code, which also regulates these types of additional structures and uses. So we've clarified that the chain-link fences are allowed through a conditional use permit or design review approval from the Planning Commission, so that's what we're asking for at this point. But as Eric mentioned, there is the ability for other materials to be discussed tonight and considered with the applicant.
I'm not familiar with that code section. Can you point me to it?
Sure, yeah. I can bring it up. It's our accessory structures section that we just modified, but let me go ahead and pull it up first for you, okay? Eric, do you know if by chance the online zoning code has been updated to include the accessory structures?
Sarah, I think you're looking for the code language at 17.660.008H.
Oh, it is here. Never mind. Thank you. It's right in front of me. April, if you want to go ahead and share my screen, I can go ahead and pull this up. I have it right here. As Katie just mentioned, it's, it's under this H section, and so it does talk about the fence types are prohibited unless specifically approved by the Planning Commission in conjunction with a design review or conditional use permit. And so this is the section I was referring to in our zoning code for accessory structures.
Sure, and item three there says chain-link fencing when visible from public areas, rights of way and/or private roadways are among the prohibited fences.
Right, with the available option through the design review process to be reviewed by the Planning Commission for approval.
I see. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I do have one more question. The, the design review amendment gets rid of the, the building, the maintenance building, and, and looking through the, the old design, the maintenance building was designed to be consistent with the appearance of the existing golf clubhouse, and I And I think, I think there's other commissioners here that were available that could address this. But it just seems to me that by taking that building out, it's a substantial change. It's, you're replacing a building that looks like part of the, the golf course facility with basically an eight foot tall chain link fence that's as long as a football field. And it seems like a fairly qualitative, very, very different design. And, and so I'm not sure what is the procedure for deciding whether something is an amendment or whether it would require a new design review.
Sure. So because there is an active approval that was still valid and they are modifying that, that would be why we considered it an amendment at this time. The process, although is, is basically the same. They both come to the planning commission for review and approval. As you mentioned, since we did feel it was quite a significant change from the original approval, we brought it back to the planning commission as opposed to taking a staff review of it. But the, the process would be the same regardless of if it was an amendment or a new design review application. But because we have the existing application or entitlement that's still valid at this time, we are treating it as an amendment.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any more questions? Okay. Well, at this time, the public is permitted to address the planning commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant who will have 10. Does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Madam Chair, member of the commission, thank you for hearing this this evening. I want to thank the staff for the recommendation and the hard work that went in to get us to this point. This has been a very frustrating journey for the city, I'm sure, as well as the applicant. Rex Cho, the current CEO of the golf course is here this evening. We started off with a building with every intention of moving in that direction. I think Vice Chairman Sparling mentioned the, the temporary structures in the parking lot. We are anxious to get those out of the parking lot and move them into this new facility, both from aesthetic standpoint and from an operational standpoint. Residents, I'm a resident as well as an advisor to Rex. I live in Somerset III. We drive by that every day and we would like, like that equipment, which is necessary to operate the, the golf course, to be moved into a, a different location where there is, where it's protected and where it's landscaped properly and, and can be a benefit and asset to the golf course. So we ask that you move forward with this this evening. Give the applicant the opportunity to find, to apply for the construction permit. Work with staff on some of the final details that are outlined in the report. And let's get this done for the sake of the benefit of the residents and the community and the golf course as quickly as possible. I'm happy to answer any questions if, if any of you would like to ask a question.
I have some, right ahead. Yes.
So I had asked a question about, so those two are going to be gone and what you're going to be storing in this, if this is approved, the new area is the equipment. So when you drive into the parking lot, you have a chain link fence that, with green mesh. There is golf, there is golf maintenance equipment in there as well as some carts. But then right next to it is the golf cart barn. It's an outdoor area, but it's barn. So is, is just the area that's with inside the green netted area going to be moving there? Are you also moving the golf carts from the front of the course to this area?
Just, just the material that's in, inside the green netting areas you referred to it.
Okay.
The material that's in the parking lot will be relocated to this new site if approved by the planning commission.
The material that's inside that area?
Yes. And, and the, the, the chain link fence will be removed. The plan is once all that is relocated, the parking lot will be clean, resealed and restriped to make it more presentable than it is currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner.
That's where I was going. I just wanted to confirm. It's back to the original design, the parking lot and where the carts were? A while back.
So the, the, the carts have been where they have been since the operation of the golf course.
Yep.
So that won't affect this. What will be affected is the temporary use permit for the temporary storage that's in existing parking lot, taking up existing parking spaces. All that will be returned to its original approval.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Yes, sir. May I ask what sort of things that you're going to be doing inside the maintenance area? I, I see that there's a 2,000 gallon fuel tank and you're going to be fueling the tractors. Are you going to be, I don't know, maintaining them, changing oil or doing all the little things that you have to do to keep a tractor running, cleaning the bugs off the windshield and all that?
So maybe, maybe Rex can answer that, what we'll be doing inside of the, the new chain link. It'll be exactly what has been approved in the temporary areas in the parking lot. But Rex is more operationally literate than I am.
Oh, thank you.
Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Rex Cho. I'm COO of Golf Course. And thank you very much for this time. We are doing refueling, fueling all the tractors and equipments and also very light maintenance, like a sharpening or reels, very minor repairs, I think, and then parking overnight. Pretty much that's daily what we're doing there.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
As far as the lighting is concerned, what would you say the primary purpose of that is? Given that most of the work happens during the day?
Security. Yes, security. The, the temporary storage areas have, have experienced theft because they're easy targets. So the, putting the lighting on there, it's hope that some of that illegal activity will be eliminated.
And have there been any studies done as far as the sufficiency of that lighting and how it may bleed into the neighborhood?
So have, have we done, when, when, maybe you, that the other toe will answer that one. Part of, part of what we submitted was a, pardon me.
Photometric.
Photometric, thank you. Plans showing the different light levels and how it's lessens as it gets further out away from the, from the yard. So it was part of our, our submission.
Did they give you an impact rating to how that may, what that, like that lumens or whatever light rating?
Again.
At a presumed distance?
I didn't do it, but you know, like I said, an electrical engineer did it. But I know he followed the, the guidelines from Brentwood.
I just, I didn't see anything in the, in the packet about it.
Through the chair, are you available to look at the packet right now? Because I can direct you to the page.
Please.
If you're in the agenda, it's packet page 34? Yeah, 34. There's a photometric plan. It shows lighting levels. With, I'm just looking at, there's, there's different areas, but there's foot candles that are shown on the, on the plan. So along the prop, the edge there, it ranges from, looks like 1.1 to 1.6 foot candles along the edge of the enclosure. But mind you, there is still 15 feet from the edge of the enclosure to the property line. And this plan is showing that there is zero or point one at the, the property line along the street. So those would be the foot candles for the luminant, the lighting levels along the street.
I, I was thinking more towards the direction of the homes in Somerset too. But I can see it extends to about point one as you reach the cart path there.
Right. Exactly. So we don't have all the way to the homes, but I believe the, the parking lot would still be there in that area to shield again from additional lighting.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a few questions. Commissioners on packet page 23. So as the applicant in a position with this proposed development, to present a quality and character appropriate for this golf course and serving to protect the values of the private and public investments in that immediate area. So I'm, I'm interested in the quality and if the applicant is prepared to keep the quality as, as we expect in that community.
Chairperson Roberts, the, the proposal is intended to be the highest quality project that would meet the needs that are important to the golf course, plus within the financial parameters of the operations of the golf course. As, as you know, this has been a couple of tough years for golfing generally. There's been a lot of rain in the last few months, which we all celebrate, except if you're a golf course owner. It means revenue is, is hard to accumulate. So this is a, this is a balance and we hope, we think we've gotten it right between the highest quality project that's affordable, that will meet the needs of the golf course and not, not have a negative impact on the neighbors, of which I am one of the golf course. It is important that the golf course have the ability to continue to operate in this area. The consequences of that would be detriment, more detrimental to the homeowners, again, of which I'm one.
Okay. And what is the timeline on these supplies that would be required to, to move this project forward if approved this evening? Do you have a timeline?
So, so we've, we've talked about that. We will, assuming, hopefully, we get a positive recommendation from, or vote from the planning commission. There'll be the need to complete the architectural and engineering work. As soon as that's accomplished, we submit that to staff. Hopefully, we get a, a construction permit and we'll be on our way. And we want to move forward as quickly as possible without any further delay.
You see any barriers with, with your architect and, and the other communities in this? Another, other people that are involved in this? And the reason I'm asking, because I, I would really like to hear, with supply chains being what they are, if you're going to experience or anticipate experiencing a timeline issue with supply chain?
I guess, I guess the main issue would be the actual fencing and that part of it. And I've been in touch with the supplier who is going to do the work. And he said there's plenty of available fencing. So I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Appreciate it. I don't have any further questions. Any questions from the commissioners? Please.
The additional areas that have been used temporarily for presumably the last year or two, because, you know, those are currently six foot tall chain link fences with a mesh to obscure the contents behind them. Is there a reason that a, for the permanent solution, that the same obscuring methodology was chosen?
Well, the, the fencing that you're referring to is temporary. It's normally in place during construction or for a temporary use. What's being installed will be a permanent installation. So it'd be more solid and more secure and intended to be there permanently rather than for a limited period of time.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
And through the chair, just to clarify, the material for the obscuring is slightly different for the proposal. He's going to be using flats through the chain link versus just the meshing. So it should be 95% obscured.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So we are finished speaking with the applicant. Are there any comments, questions from the public and/or Zoom?
Through the chair, I have one speaker card here in person. And then I'll go to Zoom. I have three hands raised. We'll start with Gary Brand.
The opportunity to speak today. Basically, the commission, you nailed most of my concern points. And that was, first of all, originally, the plan was for a maintenance shed. And with kind of the screening around it was kind of supplemental. And now the maintenance shed is gone. So it kind of looks, to me, it's going to look more like a, just like a storage yard as opposed to some architectural addition to the, the area. Secondly, the size of the area, to me, is huge. I mean, it's a football field long and almost two thirds of a football field wide. And we've got 24 foot high lights all the way around it. It sounds like the actual light that hits the, that may hit the houses like on Benoni. Oh, that's, I forgot to mention, I'm Somerset II resident. So the houses on Benoni and on Katy Way, the backyards, they'll be able to see this, especially the lights from over there. And if it's just a big lighted facility, I'm not sure how that's going to appear to the residents over there. So that, that's a concern. The other thing, one of the commissioners mentioned was kind of what's the existing materials that are stored in some of the existing temporary one? And it's like, yeah, a lot, you know, up near the clubhouse, it's carts and maintenance equipment. Out toward our gatehouse, I don't know, it looks like junk that's back there. Frankly, that's what it looks like to me. So I question the size of these two small ones that they've got now. They really need that big a facility to store that amount of stuff in this, you know, probably four times the area of the current temporary storage. And then the, 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 the appearance of that monster structure from the homes like over on Benoni and, and Katy Way from their backyards. Lastly, I wanted to mention that the, the planned look of the facility, what it looks like on paper, looks great. You know, or, I mean, you may look at it and say, yeah, this is, this is fine. It's good enough. But really, you got to look at this into the future. And if you look at storage facilities like over at Shadow Lakes, it's, it's pretty much a mess over there. I mean, fortunately, it's kind of away from everything, but it's, it's really a mess. Currently, there's, there's a lot of junk in the current storage area. And I, I am really concerned how this is going to look in the future with the maintenance levels that the golf club is currently showing. And the best example of that is the frontage on Somerset Drive. The, the sidewalk strip and the, it's, it's not irrigated. It's basically all weeds. The corner wall, which is kind of new, newly built and it's got new signage on it, and they put in new landscaping, it's all going to weeds. And you look at Merrill Gardens right across the road, it's maintained properly. So to me, there's a pattern of lack of maintenance here and lack of upkeep. So I want you to consider that in your decision. And lastly, despite what the decision is, I'd like to see, and several Somerset II residents I know would like to see, that that sidewalk strip along Somerset Drive be taken care of like it should be. And would request that as a condition of And would request that as a condition of whatever approval you give, that that be properly uh taken care of and maintained and irrigated to look like it should in the rest of the community. Thank you.
We'll go to Zoom. Our first speaker is Luis.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, this doesn't pertain to the speaker that just walked off. I was trying to put my hand up when you opened it up for public comment. Um, we had submitted an email regarding plans for the amphitheater. Did you see that email come through to be presented at today's meeting? Hello? Hello?
Good evening. This is Katie Wazinski, the city's Assistant City Attorney. At this time, the commission is hearing comments related to the item before them, which is a request for a design review amendment for the Brentwood Golf Course. Uh, if you have comments related to other items, staff would be happy to take your call. Uh, you can reach the planning manager. But if you have comments related to this item, um, I'm sure the commission would be happy to hear them.
I don't. I submitted my questions and comments for this specific meeting via email as suggested, an email to me that if I had comments or questions about any subject or topic, I submit through email and it presents at this meeting. So does that the public comment that it comes through email come at the top of the meeting or at the end of the meeting?
Yeah. So the planning commission previously heard uh general public comments at the beginning of the meeting, and that time is reserved for comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda or that belong on the consent calendar or future agenda items. Uh, so that was an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to make those general public comments. That being said, Madam Chair, it is up to the commission if at this time you would like to accept a general public comment in the course of this item.
Well, we're in the middle of um comments on this agenda item. And so I think we need to, uh, as a courtesy, continue with our Zoom callers and reroute uh this uh this app this participant, this this person back to um the planning department.
Yeah, and through the chair, I'd be happy to follow up with her tomorrow.
Would you? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tara Bozini.
Good evening. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, my, I have a couple of questions, and the first primary question is with the um if the plan is approved, will Rex be continuing to employ a dog as a security measure? Or will the new lights be sufficient enough for him so he does not need a to employ a dog being chained or tethered all day long on a pulley system twenty for mo- all day and all night for the most part?
Okay.
Um, as well as um, I do also have a concern about the new uh the new enclosure and the new um structure that is being built um along with the previous speaker um who spoke in person at the meeting that um I am actually a patron, a golf patron myself. Um, I visit golf courses regularly, and I would agree with him that these areas are very much not kept up well. Um, the current locate um temporary locations are not kept up well. Um, quite frankly, they smell and for obvious reasons, because he employs a dog there and the dog, you know, uses the restroom. Um, he also runs the dog tied up to the golf cart and runs the dog around the course. I have witnessed him um actually bump the the dog with his golf cart as he was demonstrating to all of us out front of the golf course. So my concerns are, is he going to continue to abuse and neglect an animal at this golf course as a form of security measure? And is he going to really maintain that new structure and keep it clean? Uh, because I'm concerned about what that will draw as far as rodents, um pests, uh and things of that nature into that kind of structure if it's not maintained, if it's just treated like basically a garbage enclosure.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next speaker. That's Celeste Smith.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for hearing my concerns and um I I am in the same camp as Tara. Um, I wanted to bring up the fact that this maintenance yard and fenced area um has been addressed tonight. Um, everyone has been talking about the items and material behind the fencing, golf carts, equipment, and a two-thousand-gallon fuel tank, among other things. Um, but no one is no one has mentioned the dog that is being tethered twenty-four hours a day behind that fence. Um, several of us were protesting this last uh about last weekend, and um we are familiar with the dog. I know that residents nearby are familiar with this dog. She is not a security dog. She is because A, she is tethered, and B, she is very, very friendly. Um, and when the architects talk about wanting a a quality project, it has to include humane treatment of a dog, not inhumane treatment of a dog um who is who is not loved the way a dog should be loved. This is not a security dog, and it's not appropriate to keep a security dog, if it even was one, on a golf course. So, you know, when we talk about communities being involved and affected, yes, they are, because nearby residents have been trying to feed the dog and give the dog water through the fence because they see how neglected she is.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Yes.
Um, and I really appreciate your comments. The animal is not on our agenda. Although I do appreciate what you're saying, I would I would ask you and anyone that is listening to this this applicant's um document, uh, this this applicant's uh application, that you call or continue to call the County Animal Control. Okay, that's that will take care of that whole thing. I I would encourage you to do that. Um, unfortunately, the planning commission is um in a position this evening to make a decision on the applicant's um request for a storage bin. And the and, you know, not to be disrespectful, but I I just want to uh stay on course with what it is that we're doing here, okay?
I do understand. I just wanted to make clear that if i- if the project is approved, you may, we may have this problem continuing as well as on Kent property.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have Christina Johnson. And just a heads up to all those that are raising their hands. If you already spoke, um, you are not to speak again because your time is up. Christina?
Good evening. Um, thank you, Council, for hearing us this evening. Um, I understand that we do not want to address the dog situation, but this is a community concern. Um, not just because the dog is tied up and tethered twenty-four-seven, but Rex has indicated to us that when he expands the golf course, he is going to get a second more aggressive dog to maintain and be security for the new enclosure that's being built. If you approve the plans to expand this, not only are you allowing this gentleman to put out a dog that could be a very public nuisance um to the community to protect the new enclosure. Um, but again, we are, we are saying it's okay to use animals as guard dogs um for these enclosures. Additionally, if you look at the enclosure that the current animal is in right now, it is facing the street. It is very unkept. Um, there is drapes or or mesh that is hanging from trees trying to enclose or trying to cover part of the enclosure. Um, there are feces and urine and water everywhere. Um, and in the new enclosure, which again, he has told us he is going to get a second more aggressive guard dog, the same is gonna happen. I don't understand why the council would approve the expansion on a golf course when the gentleman who runs the golf course is not maintaining the enclosures that he currently has. That is a huge community concern. It is a huge community eyesore. Um, and it should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Chair Roberts, there are no additional hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain any more discussion from the commissioners on this.
I'll go if nobody else wants to go first.
Sure, please, Commissioner Floyd.
Okay, um as far as the the service area, I I do appreciate staff as main interpretation, but what I understand a service area to be is a fueling station, and this, that's clearly what this is. Beyond that, there's a, there's a distinct prohibition against chain link fences in such an area in the uh design guidelines, which uh I know people keep saying they're just guidelines, but they are meant to be followed. Looking further at the uh Title Seventeen, Section six sixty, uh, Item Three specifically um prohibits a chain link fence if it's visible from the road or from a public area um or from residential, and this site is visible from all three. And if you have been by the site, you know, there's a, there's, it looks like a batting cage or something back there, this green mesh, and you can see it clearly through the trees. You can see the clubhouse through the trees. In the picture that's included in the packet that shows the view from the street, you can look through the street, the trees, and see the clubhouse, so it's not gonna be very well screened, and it is eight feet high. And it is a hundred feet long, so it's going to be very, very visible. So um what we're being asked to do tonight is make an exception um under that uh section of code. But I don't see anywhere where we're obligated to do that, so we can certainly give that some consideration because it is visible. It's huge. Um, it's not a small giant chain link fence. It's not, you know, it's enormous. It's a hundred feet long or a hundred yards long, excuse me, thirty yards wide. It's big. Um, and it will be visible. I I visited the site myself, and I took a sight line uh from the cart path looking back at the project site and looking back at the uh the residences, and I can see why the residents are concerned. There is a very clear path. As far as the the light, um, the photometric study shows the lumens going down to point one, but um if you look in the corners of the inside the fence, it's one point nine, so point one is still probably gonna be visible, and I think people in their backyards at night um are going to see those lights. Uh, they may not be bright, but they'll be able to see them. Um, and I don't think they're gonna appreciate them being there. As far as the 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 slats in the fence, I, you know, seen fences that are slatted in that way. And they don't stay nice. I mean, they don't really look nice to begin with, and certainly not up to the kind of standards that we're accustomed to around here, and then they don't stay nice. Um, I've heard several residents commenting here tonight, and we've had a few emails noting that the uh maintenance standards are not very high at the golf course um and that they don't trust that this fence is gonna be kept in nice shape. I also observed when I was visiting, there's a appears to be a planter that's going to um screen some of the fence. That planter is long enough so to kind of screen the part that would be observable from the business there from the patio area where there'll be people dining. They'll they'll maybe see some plants, but it cuts off. And the back, you know, almost two-thirds, it's what, a hundred and twenty-six screened and a hundred and sixty-eight not. The part that the neighbors are gonna be looking at has no screening at all. They're just gonna be looking at an eight-foot-tall plane wall. And setting aside for a minute that it's chain link fence, um, there's no architectural detail as is required by our design guides. There's, there's nothing in there. It's just gonna be this big green wall, um, eight feet tall and with big, you know, twenty-four-foot posts sticking up out of it. Um, I think the aesthetics of it fall far, far short of Brentwood Design Guidelines. So uh you know, I I look at at the uh at the original design that was passed by this commission before I was on it, and I see a building that, you know, substantially matches our guidelines. It it looks like the other buildings around it. It's not, it's not great. It's a metal roof and stuff, but it it matches. I I can see why it was allowed, and there was a six-foot fence, but it was, I would think, a nineteen-foot-tall building, so you would still see the building over the fence, and the fence would not dominate the whole um the whole view there, but but this is this is an eight-foot-tall fence. I don't, I don't know how else to say it. It'll be visible from the road. It'll be visible from the restaurant. It'll be visible from the the residences. Um, it's just really big. Yeah, and as uh as Chair Roberts was pointing out, I don't think this is the the statements that were made. As far as it being consistent with the uh general character PD twenty-one, or or it is not that I can see consistent. I'm I'm willing to to hear other points of view and have my mind um altered on this topic. Uh, I just, I'm really struggling to see why this is even I guess we we have to entertain it, but um it seems to fall very far short of our standards, and I I am I I just can't think of anything positive to say about it at this point in time. I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
So I'd like to, first of all, correct something that the applicant said. Golf boomed during COVID, and all that takes is a search on the internet to say that. That does not mean that Brentwood Golf Club boomed. That just means the golf industry boomed, and just look at the stock prices of Callaway and TaylorMade and what have you, and plenty of other golf courses, so um it 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 so I think part of what we have to consider is the applicant is is looking to change the design to some degree because of cost of building a uh an enclosed building for part of the for the area. And you know, I I certainly, I think uh Chair Robertson, Commissioner Ziegler, and I were the ones who approved the three that approved uh the previous design. Previous design is superior to this, um but if the applicant doesn't have the funds to pay for it, then the then he doesn't have the funds to pay for it. Um, so we're stuck with a decision to make a decision on whether we should approve a plan that is inferior to the one that was already approved. Uh, or potentially, there's future consequences for the the golf course. So I don't think that that has to be at least mentioned in this conversation because the golf course owner has other options, right? And we've already seen that in Brentwood once, so um, he has not said anything like that, so I don't want to not putting words in in his mouth by any chance. I I don't even know him, have never met him. Um, so but I think it's it's a risk, right, that we have to at least think about because far greater consequences of accepting a uh if we if we as a group decide to select uh and approve this, um, it is hidden from Balfour fairly well. Um, part of the conditions of approval last time, which I which I would insist upon this time, is keeping the existing trees that shield the project from is keeping the existing trees that shield the project from Balfour because that's part of the impact. The residents of Somerset 2 certainly are going to have a different impact than what we originally planned, which was that is the lighting. That wasn't there. I, I don't think it's going to be significant based on what I'm seeing from the, the lighting review. I do think that 24 feet is tall and I'd like to hear your, others' feedback on 24 feet. I, I understand probably why I was selected because they want to make sure that it's lit for security. I'd also say if it's, if you're having security problems, then build the enclosed facility. But he's obviously made the decision that he's not going to do that at this point. Otherwise he wouldn't have submitted this plan. So those are some, some things to, to think about. I, I will add as well that my ears did perk up when, when the applicant said that we're going to, the, the, the material that's in the, in the temporary storage in the south, in the parking lot near the guard gate, that's nothing to do with golf maintenance from what I saw. I have a picture of it. There's washing machines, there's a dumpster in it, there's concrete that's been dug up, all stuff that they have to get rid of, right? But that can't go in this, in this new, if, if this is approved, that kind of material cannot go in there. That's a, that's a code violation for sure. It's, it needs to be maintained. And if it's not maintained, I think we, we've had discussions on code enforcement here before. And I think that's how we make sure that the residents have a, you know, that can see it. Because it's probably Somerset 2 that's most greatly affected by the change in view that it is maintained to the extent that it, so that it looks and maintains brand new. We also can add conditions of approval that he has to plant trees on the side that block, that block the fencing along the golf course side so that it helps shield both the lighting as well as the fencing from the residents in Somerset 2. I really don't think you're going to be able to notice it going down Balfour at 35 miles an hour or faster, as you know, many people do. If you are, it's probably bigger issues. So I, I don't, I'm okay with the, the street side. I'm not okay with the, necessarily the, the view from Somerset 2 from an approval standpoint. So that's what, so far that's what I'll, I'll add.
May I, may I, just briefly, because, well, maybe not just briefly, but I just wanted to say, I wasn't really prepared tonight to, I don't know that we can make a decision based on the, the relative affordability. I thought, I thought we're only able to decide based on.
Well, let me answer that. The financial element to this applicant has nothing to do with this application.
I mean, I, I could go, I could go on.
So.
I, I see a Brentwood that has almost no golf courses left but this one. Then Roddy Ranch is closed, Deer Ridge is closed, Shadow Lakes is down the nine holes, the nine hole course at Brentwood is closed. So I'm not sure how, how hard it can be for them to, to gin up a little business. And also, they're trying to replace a building that was taken down to make room for a major development. The, the, the gardens, Merrill Gardens. And so the time for them to worry about how much it was going to cost to replace that building and to make provisions for that cost would have been probably at the time that that. And again, I, I apologize for, for saying any of this to you guys, but the, the, the topic of whether or not you can afford to do it is being brought up. So we do have, if, if we're going to explore that topic, let's explore it, you know? Why are you not able to afford this building? You know, why, why did you not get money out of Merrill Gardens? And, you know, if, if you, if you plan to close the golf course, who are you going to sell it to? Because it's only usable as a golf course.
Well, okay, so I don't think that the applicant, unless the commission is prepared for the applicant to come back in to have a discussion, can speak. But I did want to, if you give me one moment, I did want to let the commissioners know that there are a couple of options here. One of the options is of course to approve it. Another option is to let this application expire and the applicant would have to come back with a new plan. Or we could allow the applicant to move forward and do a timeline change, not wait a year, but wait maybe like six months for all of this to evolve. So we have some options here. We, we are not pushed in a corner to make a decision on a yea or nay. We, we can certainly allow this to expire. We can ask for a different timeline or we can approve it.
Well, there's, there's additional options. We can add, we can add conditions to make it, you know, that are easily. We can't, the, the reason why I brought that up is because we have, in my opinion, we have a responsibility to think about the, you know, a little bit of what if in this situation, right? And because that's a viable what if, we've seen it already happen, right? And so if, so it's a risk, we can certainly, obviously, you know, it takes three votes for, for it not to pass or three votes for it to pass. Of course, you know, there's a process beyond that regardless of whether it's approved or, or denied. But I think that there's a risk when you, when we think about projects like this, there's a specific risk that we've seen already take place in Brentwood. And, and while we're talking about while this isn't a, this may not be the perfect designed project that we all would want, right? And what we approved before, it's got to be part of the conversation because of, you know, the, the potential consequences, right? They can't keep, the, the, what currently exists doesn't work, right? With the temporary storage, it just doesn't work. It looks bad. It looks, I think actually the residents of Somerset and Merrill Gardens are actually affected, impacted more by what they're currently seeing than what this design would potentially look like. And if we can come up with some conditions of approval that would make the commission more comfortable with making this what it is, then we can. Certainly we don't have to approve it. That's on the table as well, right? But just understand that if you don't approve it, then there are other things down the road because those, we, we have to do, then do something with the temporary storage as well. Something has to be extended while they come back with plans, right? So because they can't just keep those temporary storage areas open.
Or you're giving me an idea. I'm looking at this thing and it's gargantuan compared to what they have now. And according to, to what you were saying and what I saw with my own eyes, there's a bunch of stuff that they have that they don't even need. So I would certainly be more interested in seeing the applicant come back with a suitably sized facility that would minimally, you know, impact the neighborhood. And I think that it would be more affordable so they can't say that it's so expensive they can't build it. Just smaller and would contain the, the tractors that they actually do need and not all the junk that they don't need. And we can see how much space that takes. We could go out there with a tape measure and I guarantee you it's not as big as a football field. And I, I would say that would be something that we could maybe propose to the applicant if they come back with something more appropriately sized for the usage and that they're not locked into so that when, God willing, the, you know, business turns up again, they don't have this huge fence they got to go tear down. They could, they could go ahead with their plan to make a nice storage building. But in the meantime, their temporary storage is hideous. And I certainly wouldn't mind hearing from them about how they'd like to build some new temporary storage that was not so hideous. But I don't think they need, I, I, I just, I can't see that their inability to build this gargantuan fence is going to bankrupt their golf course. I just, I'm not buying it. I'm living in a golf course right now that's closed and I'm fine. So, and many of my neighbors are fine. I don't think, and all of the feedback that I've had from the neighborhood, these people are all aware and none of them has come forward, other than this gentleman right here, to speak in favor of this plan. They've all been against it. So it, it matters to me what the residents think. And I, I just haven't had a resident come to us and say, oh, you know, we better let them do this or they'll close the golf course. It just hasn't come up. It's just something the applicant is proposing. And you'll forgive me, but it's in their best interest to get us to, to go along with that. But I have to look at the situation without, without giving them favoritism over their neighbors. And the neighbors are saying that they're, they're not worried about it. So I don't think we should be worried about it either. And I think that they can come back with something that they would be even more affordable, that would be more scaled to their immediate need and would not be this gigantic eyesore that, you know, the people living on the golf course, people that are using the events for their wedding, nobody wants to have a wedding and look over and see this giant fence. You know, people having dinner on, on the patio, they don't want to look at it. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's something we can think about, but I, I just don't put much stock in it, honestly. I, I, I know you, you may not agree, but that's just how I feel.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, I can appreciate that. I think based on what Vice Chair Sparling has described though, is I think we're more in the side of shades of gray of where are our discussion points as far as what we find to be malleable maybe in this discussion as a result of maybe further requirements as part of approval, that sort of thing. I think it probably behooves us based on what has been shared today to sort of at least start there and then migrate to a bit more of a consensus, to say if anything. But yeah, that's just my opinion.
Commissioner.
Hey, I get to talk. Cool. Thank you. Well, several factors. As we liked to the lighting, I too was down there on Monday, walking around, looking at the phototomic, photometrics. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Sparling. I don't think you're really going to see anything on Balfour at, at all. There's already trees, large trees there, I mean, from the sidewalk, from, from Balfour, there's grass, sidewalk, large oak trees and then a iron fence with some more landscaping. So that side I'm not worried about. And I think also when you look at over where the senior facility is, by the time you get over there, lights, you're not going to see that. I can appreciate what the, one of the gentleman was talking about, who lives in Somerset 2 and agree with some of the other comments that there, as Commissioner, I think Sparling was mentioning, that there may be options for some additional landscaping and such that may soften that from the lighting standpoint to help obscure the lighting from those that are in Somerset 2. I think it's desperately needed to move that off the corner there in terms of what it looks like. I don't think the owner, nor would I think any of the neighbors want to continue seeing the storage there. It does not look pretty. It's not attractive. That's the first thing you see when you come to a golf course. That's not a good first foot forward, which I think they understand that and realize that. So I think moving it is desperately needed. I think, actually, I'm a golfer myself, having a putting green would be great for a golf course, to have a putting green because that was all taken once the, the driving rings was, was taken down and then obviously the large putting facility, there was a great practice facility. So I think having that there. My biggest concern, you know, and a few other commissioners talking about the, the material, the chain link fence, it is, it is a gray area because it says no chain link fence, but technically is it a service area, is it not a service area? As a commission, it's something we can talk about. Is there another material other than creating a building that we would be more inclined to approve that would hold up to the weather? That's the other thing we've got to keep in mind is, you know, chain link fence isn't going to go bad with, with all the elements. The, the slating over time, yes, I would assume. I don't know what the, the specific material, what it's made of and, and the longevity that that's going to last. But so that, that is, one of my concerns is, is chain link fencing and making sure, like I said, the city is, we're looking, it's kind of, it's a gray area of, is this a service area? Is it not a service area? I wish I would have asked the question and if the, the chair isn't, you know, wants to allow a comment from the applicant. I am a little confused if I look at the area out front, if the cart, I originally thought you were going to move the carts back in there as well. And that's why you needed so much space back there. But if you're only taking that front portion that's meshed off, quote unquote, why is there such a large area that's needed back there? Fuel tanks out in front to load things, if it's just light maintenance, you know, changing tires or, or sharpening blades, things like that, that is a very large area. So I don't know if it's something that's needed. Again, I don't know if it's something that, again, the materials or, you know, the material in the fencing and/or the size. I, I don't really think it's something that should be sent to design review. I, I think the full commission should, should hear on it. And, and I don't think you'd be prepared to do anything in terms of making size changes here. I just, I would love to know why it's so large because I think that would also help in the Somerset 2 neighbors, when you're looking out there at the size of the facility that they're looking at. Obviously a smaller si, a smaller facility, you have the planter box, those types of things, but then you can add trees to help to shield some of that so they wouldn't be looking at, you know, the, the, neighbors wouldn't be looking at that. But those are some of my initial thoughts and comments as of now.
Commissioner Smalling. Any more comments?
No, I, I think that based on both Commissioner Fuller and Commissioner Ziegler's question regarding the size, I think that if you'd be willing to have the applicant answer the question, why do they need so much space?
Sure, but before he answers the question, I, I'll tell you what I'm struggling with. So there have been numerous reports, I know that you've heard most of them, with regards to the actual maintenance of this, this property. And so the track record isn't that great. That's, that's a big issue. And so when we're talking about building this huge storage facility and now with what's been reported and on record where things are being stored, and I'm trying to figure out why the enforcement agent has not been out there to cite what is going on in this other facility. That being said, because they have, this gentleman hasn't been cited on what's already there that shouldn't be there, having a bigger facility brings to question what is going to be stored in this facility? If you're already got washing machines and dumpsters and all those kinds of things in this other facility, in this other storage facility, a larger facility begs the question, what else is going to take up real estate in this facility? So I'm struggling with the maintenance that has been communicated and I personally went over there to see it myself and what the residents, and we're supposed to be good neighbors, are communicating and the storage facility that is there that is presenting a problem as, as it is sitting there right now. So now I'm going to ask if it would be all right with the commissioners for the gentleman to speak on behalf of some of the questions that we have regarding the storage facility. Yes. So if you'd be kind enough to help us understand why such a large facility, what are you planning on putting in this facility?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There has been good and productive conversation. I appreciate the comments of all the commissioners. Let me start if I could by going back historically. When the golf course was first put in place, there was a maintenance building in the projects that's now Shea Homes. It was a metal building that served the golf course for many years until that property was sold to Shea Homes. As a, as a condition of that approval, that maintenance building was torn down. I, I've been involved with this project since before that time. We met with Shea Homes, the owner of the golf course, offered to purchase the, the maintenance building and the property it was located on and two lots in the entryway so that it could be landscaped to, to mitigate the negative impact on the new homeowners. Because the engineering had been done, the Shea Homes declined to consider selling the, the lots. So in, in response to Commissioner Fuller, we did everything we could to try to preserve that maintenance building because we anticipated this exact problem. We realized moving it anywhere was going to create anxiety for others and would raise questions. And we were unsuccessful. And I, for that, I wish we had been successful because we wouldn't be here before, before you this evening. To Commissioner Ziegler's questions, I think, and Vice Chair Sparling, I think you've discussed the possibility of additional landscaping to protect the. to protect the residents and to address the, the, uh, concerns of the resident who is here. Uh, we could work with staff and increase that landscaping around the entire structure is not to try to mitigate both the light and the appearance of that structure to the residents in Somerset one, one. And if that were a condition, the, the, of approval, the applicant would accept that. And to the, uh, to the Chair's, Chairperson Roberts' comments, the material and property that will be stored in that, uh, new facility are, is, are items that are necessary for the operation of the, of the golf course. There is no intent to bring in any additional, uh, um, property or any additional material. What's needed to operate that golf course is, is what will be stored there. And to your final, uh, observation about the appearance of the golf course, I live in a golf course, um, lot. Um, has the, is the golf course look today like what it looked like when I bought my home? It does not. It does not look like that. Uh, the playing area is, is still preserved. The, I live by a green. It is in great shape. What's not maintained is, are the slopes, the non-revenue bearing slopes. And that simply is a revenue, uh, saving measure. I understand that golf did peak during COVID, uh, and this golf course was no exception. But since that time, uh, and with certainly with the cer, with the, uh, recent rainfall, uh, play at the golf course, at this particular golf course has been very minimal, causing a great financial hardship, uh, to the facility. There are other capital improvements that need to be done. This property now is 20 plus years old. The irrigation system is going to have to be replaced and what the remaining hillside and creekside courts, each of those projects and each of those nine holes is estimated to be in excess of a million dollars. So there, there are extreme financial, uh, pressures on the golf course. And in, in order to preserve and continue the operation of the golf course, we urge you to support this this evening. The concerns have been raised by the commissioner and the, the resident who is here, who made some, uh, uh, important observations and comments about the existing, uh, golf course. We can incorporate those as we move forward. But without the maintenance facility, we will continue to look at those two, I think one of you called them ugly, interim, uh, uh, facilities. And I would call them ugly because they are. Uh, we can get rid of those. We can put in this new, new facility. Uh, if there are violations of the use of the facility, you have code enrichment to, uh, to cite the owner if that, if he chooses to violate your city policies and, and, um, rules. I don't anticipate that that will occur. There are mechanisms to ensure that if you improve it this evening, that you can get what you're voting for. And again, we would agree as a condition to enhance that landscaping around the entire, uh, uh, project to ensure that the residents, the closest residents, um, are not impacted in a negative way. And I ask that you vote in favor of this, uh, when the item comes before you for a vote. Thank you.
Can you, can you clarify for me? Cause I didn't hear the answer. Why does it have to be so big?
The, so we, I would have to, oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I, I was about to say I should defer to the guy I just socked in the face. Let me defer to Rex.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I visited, uh, Discovery Bay and reworked, uh, golf course and also previous, uh, maintenance lot. Every three of them, over 20,000 square feet, 20,000 to 28,000 square feet. And building, they have, uh, about five to 7,000 square feet of a building they do have. And inside, uh, maintenance yards, there are four different, different sandbox. So they put the sand, we put the sand in the outside parking lot looks kind of our construction area, but there has to be going to the oil that inside the fence. So difference sand, four difference sand, fertilizer, storage, oil and golf cart need maintenance because it looks like the resident said, right now it's very crowded. And if a golf cart need to fix it, we just put all golf cart together and it's crowded. There has to be all separated, all equipment has to be separate, just like a parking lot. They, if we set it up, they require the tw, minimum 25,000 square feet. And that's where the size come from. Uh, all other golf courses, maintenance is about average 25,000 square feet.
And so before that, um, before this application came before us for this sizable storage facility, there was a golf course there with another kind of storage facility that was doing the same thing. So what has changed? Um, when that golf course was running 15, 20 years ago, what has changed when you talk about sand and separation of, of these types of materials? What has changed that brings about this larger complex? Can you, can you explain that?
That is almost the same size as the previous size lot that which right now Shea's building homes. They have, uh, 6,000 square feet of a building and lot is about close to 20,000 square feet of a lot.
Okay.
Then they, uh, had a, right now that is existing, their space is now under, uh, development by Shea's.
Chair, so as a golfer, um, one of the things, well, I think to help that, help applicant here in explanation or Commissioner Flor as well. Now that what he's saying is right now, if you look at the golf course parking lot, where the pro shop is, then the restaurant, and then the south side where it sounds like hopefully things would be cleaned up over there. Um, there's, that's where they're putting all the sand now. So you have different types of sand that are used in bunkers and throughout the course. And so what I'm hearing him saying is it's no longer going to be in the parking lot. It's actually going to be moved into this facility, storage facility. So I think that's one of the reasons why it could be. I mean, when you bring in sand and you've got 18 holes, you, you're not bringing in sandbags. You're bringing truckloads of sand. And so that's one of the, I'm understanding a little bit better now from a size standpoint. One of the requirements is to be able to hold that type of material in separate areas and have enough room to do maintenance of those, um, particular units, whether it's carts or whether it's, you know, uh, mowers and all those types of things, rollers. I'm happy to hear the applicant say they're willing to look at, uh, additional masking in the sense of with using landscape and things like that. Cause I think that can soften the entire area. I think, I forget, I forget who, you know, someone said earlier, if we get past the chain link fence and say that's okay. Again, I think it's the concern of just the overall maintenance of that throughout time is what I'm hearing a lot of concerns. So I think we've got to take that into consideration. If, if, if it's masked well with additional landscape, if, if lighting is true, uh, once that facility's up, I think, uh, I don't, I don't know if I saw it in conditions. Sarah can, can let me know. But, uh, typically if there's concerns like this after the, uh, facility or whatever we're talking about is built, they can go out and look at lighting afterwards to make sure there isn't anything change, especially if they look, are looking at additional, um, whether they're changing angles of, of the lighting or whether they're, they're adding additional landscaping in to soften those types of things. I think we can condition them to go out and make sure that what we, what we think we're getting, we're getting and what the neighbors are hoping for or not hoping for to see lighting, that that actually is what they're, they're getting from that standpoint. So, um, as I've listened to the applicant, I, I, I'm feeling more comfortable in understanding why the size. Uh, I, I really do think the benefits of this facility outweighs leaving it where it is, obviously. Um, is it going to cause some, you know, people not to like it? Of course. But at the same time, I'm, I have to look at what are all the pros of this versus what the cons are. They're moving everything off the streets. Hopefully they're cleaning up that corner in that area out there and it'll be maintained properly. You're going to getting all the sand and cleanup of the south side parking lot moved into this storage facility. They're gaining a putting green. They're, uh, open to landscaping all the way around, uh, to soften it, to hopefully, uh, allow the neighbors of Somerset one and two to be comfortable with what they're seeing. Um, that's kind of where I'm coming from right now. I mean, I appreciate some of the other concerns. Like I said, my biggest thing was the, the chain link fence. I just, I'm in my mind, I'm trying to think of any other material that may not necessarily look better if we're going to be surrounding with landscaping, but it's going to hold up better from a weather standpoint. And it's not the chain link fence itself. It's more the slats or the material that they're using to, that's going to go in there. I don't, I don't know what the specific material is or the lifetime of that type of material. And just knowing the, the hot weather out here and that sort of thing, that's the, that's the concern I would have with, with using those materials. So I'm looking at you to see if maybe you've got an answer.
Sure. Um, I, I did want to comment that there is a condition of approval, which is number 11 currently, that talks about requiring landscaping around, um, the enclosure along the Balfour and Somerset sides. Um, so it could be expanded to include, um, the entire enclosure to help address those concerns. Um, I don't know the lifetime specifically of the material. Um, maybe the applicant can speak on that since they've been working with the, um, you know, contractors and, and providers. Um, but there is discussion that we can use additional or different types of material if, if there is one that we see better fit. Um, I think we, we can have a discussion with the applicant. And, and maybe, I, I know we briefly mentioned about the lighting and the height, but I'm not sure if even a couple feet of reduced height would still provide the same lighting for them, um, and also help alleviate some of these concerns for the neighbors. Um, there might be some flexibility that we can work with there. But again, I, I would need to defer to the applicant.
So, um, I, I kind of like what I'm hearing, but this is, this is kind of what I want to put forward is I don't want us to sit here tonight and make a major redesign of this redesign and not have the public have the opportunity way back in. I want to hear from the neighbors again, when we come up with this better plan. And so I think the way that we would do that is, um, and I understand that, that the, uh, the current, um, approval is expiring, but it, I don't see where it would take, uh, a burdensome amount of time, um, to come up with a better plan and one that was more palatable to the neighbors and, um, put that forward and bring it back to this commission where the neighbors could comment on it again. And I would hope that the neighbors of this golf course will have something better to say the next time they come in here. Um, and would maybe be more positive about what they were seeing because I can tell you the, the feedback I've got so far is just all negative. They don't like it. They don't want it. They don't care, you know, about any kind of, if the golf course closes. And I can tell you, I, I live on a closed golf course and, um, my wife until recently was a Realtor. We didn't lose any property value. People come in from San Francisco. You know what they see? They see an open field. They love it. So, um, I don't think that there's any rush for us to resolve this matter tonight. I understand that there's an expiration pending. Um, but there is a temporary facility there as horrid as it is. Um, I would suggest maybe cleaning it up a little bit because you're complaining about your business and nobody wants to go golfing when there's a junkyard in the parking lot, right? So maybe if you made it look a little nicer, you might do a little more business. But, um, that's not my business. That's your business. Uh, you're the one who made it my business. I don't really even want to think about it. But if you're, if you're telling me poverty, then I have to consider it. So what I want to say is I would like to, um, table this tonight. And I know that we can't just table it because it's going to expire, but I don't want to, um, sit here and make a bunch of compromises and not think anything through, you know, and do it in 20 minutes or whatever it's going to take us and then pass something and then later realize the public still doesn't like it or we forgot to do something, you know, it hasn't gone back through staff. I think I, I really value what staff does here. And, um, if we're going to make major changes to this thing, I want to see it come back in its changed form. So, so the public can be duly notified. It's important that the public is noticed on what we're voting on. If we're changing it tonight, then they haven't been noticed on any of it, right? If we change the size of it, it's not in the notice. If we change the masking on it, it's not in the notice. They haven't seen any of it. So let's, I would suggest that we could put it on the table, let staff go back, give the staff some suggestions, let staff go back, work with the applicant, come up with a plan that is more suitable and bring it back to us as a fresh design review. Because as Sarah pointed out, it's the same either way, right? It's the same process. And, um, let's do it right is all I'm saying. You know, let's, let's not just throw something together here. Let's, let's, let staff have another stab at it and come back with something that we can feel more comfortable with. That would be my recommendation.
Are you making a motion? Is that what you're doing?
Uh, no, I'm making a discussion. I think, uh,
I think I'm gonna, I disagree in the comment of letting the public have their say. Uh, this has been noticed. The public has talked about it. One gentleman came out this evening to speak about the concern of the lights. The majority of the emails, the majority of the comments on social media, the majority of the comments on Zoom tonight were something that had nothing to do with what we are here to talk about. That was a dog, period. So to say that this, that the public hasn't had enough time to comment or to look at things, I, I disagree with. I'm not saying we're making major changes. I've been on the planning commission long enough, making landscape changes to soften things around there is to me, in my opinion, in my opinion, is not a major change. And that's something that the public has to approve or agree upon. Um, that's done all the time administratively and things like that, or even design review if it has to go. I don't know if I've ever seen landscape go back to a design review. Um, so I don't, I haven't heard anything here tonight that says to make a major change to this design, you know? So I, but my, so that's why, when you said if we're going to do that, we need to bring it back. So that's why I, I don't understand. I, I hear what you're saying. I respect what you're saying.
Well, let's, let's work it out then to, to what we think we need to change and then,
Okay.
and then we change, well, we could think about that.
All right. So,
whether or not it's.
Let's, let's do this. Um, uh, I think that we've heard from the applicant and we've heard from the commissioners. And what I keep hearing is the size, the, the fence, the landscape. Um, and so we can talk until whenever about the size, the landscape and the fence. But I for one would like us to either make a motion, have a comment or a resolution to the size, the landscape or the fence and move on. So is there a resolution, a condition that somebody would like to add to this conversation?
Before, before we go there, I just want to get, I want to be respectful of Commissioner Flor's request of, I, I don't agree with it, but I want to be respectful of, of the request. Um, and I'll look to Eric from a scheduling standpoint or Sarah. I'm not sure who the appropriate person is to ask the, the question. Um, and that is if we were to give the applicant time to work with city staff to make improvements, given the scheduling, uh, and what else is on the agenda as well as the expiring, uh, review, is that even an option? Because their, their permit, the, the extension expires end of September roughly, right?
Yeah, through the chair, members of the commission. So I actually discussed this with Katie a little while ago and verified the expiration date is August 17th. So it's a little over two weeks from now. Uh, the good news on that is there is another regularly scheduled meeting on the 15th, which is two weeks from tonight. Uh, the bad news is that's an extremely short turnaround time to work with the applicant, have plans revised, put a report together. So I think that's kind of off the table. Uh, so then you are looking at something in September, which then the application, the current application has officially expired at that point. I suppose we could process it at that point simply as a new application and there's just no entitlements. Um, and Katie, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that procedurally. I don't know if we've had to deal with that in the past on other projects. So it's not. So it's not, definitely not preferred to push it past the August 15th meeting, but I don't know how we make that happen.
So are you saying that if we go that route, we're setting a precedent for others to come before us and in a short window when we can't make a decision and now put before the planning department something that needs to speedily move forward? Because that's the one thing that I'm cautious of is setting a precedent.
So if Eric doesn't mind, I'll just jump in for one minute. He's right, I agree that the present entitlement expires August 17th. I would say the, the good news potentially is that the code provides that, that deadline may be extended by the planning commission upon application filed at any time before such period has expired. And in so much as they got their application in prior to the expiration, I would think we would allow this to carry over until the commission had taken their final action. Eric and I haven't had a chance to talk about that interpretation, but they met their deadline, right? To get the application in before this expired. So I would say that you do have the ability to move this forward a little bit without letting that expiration date drive your decision-making. That being said, if, if you really are only talking about three issues, perhaps you haven't finished that conversation and I don't want to get ahead of the commission because I know you still have discussions to go through tonight.
And how long?
Thank you.
How long? Because you mentioned that we can extend it out a little bit. What does a little bit mean? What is that?
My reading of this language is that the applicant simply needs to get their application in prior to the expiration of the existing entitlement. So it could be, it could be pushed out a little longer. I don't know what's on upcoming agendas. I don't know what sort of timelines the applicant may be facing for their own financing, funding, whatever else. I don't know any of those external factors, but just looking at the code, I believe that it would be permissible to continue this discussion until another time without effectively killing the existing entitlement.
Yeah, and I would just say, I don't, I don't disagree with all of that, but it's, it becomes extremely subjective at that point in terms of just how far it gets pushed out. There are quite a few applications that we're actively processing right now. The last several months of the year are going to be pretty busy and I wouldn't want to drag it on too long, but obviously if the commission has concerns about the way this current application looks, to the extent that some revisions are needed, you know, we'll do our best to work with the applicant and bring it back to the commission at one of the upcoming meetings, but it, it wouldn't be this month.
I know that there are a few of these already in the hopper that we've asked to come back and I would hope that those would come back before this one. That being said, I'm wondering, I'm looking for counsel on this. If we were to allow this timeline to expire or deny this application this evening and the applicant came back right away with a new application, what, what are we looking at in terms of time? The same, we'd have to wait, he'd have to wait in the hopper for his turn to bring the new application forward?
Yes, so if, if the commission decided to, well, a couple of things. If the commission decided to deny the request tonight, the applicant would have the ability to appeal that to the city council if they wanted to. So there would be that step. And that would prolong the life of the earlier entitlement while this current application is finally resolved, right? If the city council approved the application, that would be the end of it. If the city council denied the application, then the earlier one would die also and the applicant would need to come in with a new application. And at that point, they would be put in line along with everybody else and staff would process that, I assume a revised application of some sort and bring it to you in due course.
Through the chair, Katie may clarify, is if they come back, if they were denied and they come back, would their application have to be substantially different in order to be processed or would we be able to look at something similar?
Sarah makes a good point. We do have some requirements in the code regarding the ability of an applicant who has been denied to submit a new application, I want to say within a one-year period. So we've actually never had it come up. Let me see. I'm not seeing that language as applied to design review, but if you want to give me a minute, I can, I can verify that so we know what the applicant would be facing in terms of timelines for their ability to reapply.
Chair Roberts, well, she's maybe looking that up. Can I make a comment? From what I'm hearing, if it was denied, yes, they may have to come back and pay all the fees and all that sort of stuff. So it's a lot of additional time and dollars that they'd have to spend to come back. I'm more in the camp that if we don't feel comfortable passing something as is today or passing it with, you know, conditions of landscaping, things like that, we've got some other ideas, then I think as a group or as a body, then we come up with the items that we would like to see potentially addressed. Have them go back and work with staff and come back and present to us. That way they don't lose their timeline, they don't lose additional monies to, to reapply for things. They don't come across whatever Katie and Sarah are talking about here with coming back with the first year of being denied and having to come back and substantial changes to whatever they had that got denied or whatever that might be. This way, to Commissioner Flor's earlier comments that, okay, if they come back again, now you've got, it's going to be reposted and revisited, public can get, look at it and hopefully the items that we would like to see addressed or changed or softened or whatever, they come back to us with something that we all feel comfortable with in, in proceeding with. So that's kind of my thought process here. It doesn't sound like we all want to say, yep, let's go and stamp it and move on, but I, I really have a hard time, doesn't sound like we would just want to outright deny it. So if we can come to a median where we say, here's the things we want to have looked at, let them keep their timelines and keep things moving and then hopefully September timeframe, whatever it is, you know, we, we have an opportunity to have it come back to us with, with some potential changes that, that we all can, you know? Or maybe we say, come back and even sit at design review if we need to go that direction before it comes back to a full planning commission. So something like that, maybe. Those are options that we have as a body. We could, if that would be more appropriate from Commissioner Flor's standpoint, come back to design review first and then recommendations are made and then it comes back to full planning commission. Just food for thought.
Commissioner Spaulding? Yeah, so I think, I mean, the, the current design comes down to, from listening to everybody, three things. Size, which I, which it, it comes down to whether it's needed or not. And I don't think, as much as I'd like to say, I think I, it's probably too big for what they need, given what I'm currently seeing, how they store their equipment, that doesn't mean that it's not the right size for what they want to do for the, the current maintenance. And I don't think any of us have the expertise to know whether it's the right size or not. It is big, but so size is the issue. The second issue is, you know, lighting. And I think closely related to that is the, you know, the shielding from primarily, you know, for Somerset, from Somerset, right? On that side. That's already been mitigated from Balfour and the current CUP. So, so those are, those are the three issues that I'm hearing that reasons have objections. I, I think size is a tough one for us to say, yeah, we know better. And I am a, a big critic of designing, massive design changes from here, right? That should be done with the staff and, and the staff has already done that. I think the chain link fence is interesting and it relates to me the same way as our last meeting back in June with, you know, there's a single story profile or single story, right? We have these guidelines that aren't very clear, that all, all can be, we will all have direct input on cleaning those up in the future, right? To, to light, lay out whether chain link fence is correct or not, right? For this or whether this is a service area or not. We'll have the ability to change that in the future. And I don't know that it's necessarily fair to hold the current applicants for any project accountable to things that we'd like to see in the next design guideline update. So for me, this really comes down to, comes down to the lighting. Is it, you know, is, is 24 feet needed? Because to me, that looks like it's 24 feet from like a parking lot in a shopping center, which is a much different reason than lighting for the, the height of the lighting for primarily security reasons because the golf course is not open during the evening, obviously, when it's dark. And then how can we, you know, can we just add a simple landscape update, which is on the clubhouse side of the fencing to make sure that eventually the eight-foot fence is shielded from the residents of Somerset? I think that's a simple change that could be made. I'm comfortable having that discussion and I don't think it is over-designing in, in the pinch, as you mentioned, Commissioner Flor, earlier about, you know, designing from up here. So I think it just really, it comes down to landscaping and lighting for me.
Well, to that point, are there any other considerations that are on the table as discussed beyond what Vice Chair Sparling is describing?
Well, I have, I have a few of them. One of them is because we aren't experts and we have to take your word for it on the size of this storage facility, I'd like to have an opportunity to see what the other golf courses that you mentioned and their sizes and what they've got stored in there. I don't have that in the packet and I'm not a golfer. So I, before I make a decision, I have to have, I'd like to see exactly what we're up against and why it's so big. As it relates to the fencing, chain link fencing, for me, it, it just doesn't work. But I, I would like to see some other materials that are put out there that could be used. I've been to a couple of facilities for weddings and they weren't chain linked. So I'd, I'd just like to see what the other options are in terms of fencing. The thing I'm struggling with is the maintenance. I, I'm just so concerned because I'm hearing the residents in that community communicate that there is a lack of, of maintenance on your, on the property. And I would imagine that this big facility would, would probably take care of most of that, but again, I'm not an expert. And so until I'm able to compare it to other facilities and their sizes and what they're doing and its location, I just can't speak on it. And that's a concern. The other piece that I'm very concerned about is this lighting and why it has to be so tall and so high. So that is, and we've all had something to say about that. I don't go along to get along, as you can see. So I, I just really would like to take a look at what the other golf courses are doing, again, comparatives. So if we can agree to get some information from same size, same type golf courses, I think we can make an educated, a better decision than just having this stand alone. And it, it is no disrespect to the applicant, but our hands are kind of tied with making assumptions here. So that, that's my take on it.
I, I have a suggestion or, or something that I'd like to take note of. Going back to the, the commercial and industrial design guidelines on page five, where it does talk about service and loading areas, there is a standard right there that we could look at and it's, it's a wall, right? And it's not, it's not chain link, but it's not a building, it's just a wall. And we're contemplating a height of eight feet, so I don't know that I would object to it being shorter than the golf course or anything else, but it's, it would just be made to look like the buildings, you know? It would be made to be compatible with the buildings. And I realize it's a big wall, but then it's a big fence. I don't know what the difference is in, in cost, but if, if I saw, you know, an application that had a wall and the landscaping that matches the picture on page five, I think I would have a hard time saying no to it because it, that's what the guideline says. Also, looking on page six, there's a, a plain wall on a Safeway and they, they've got a landscape trellis on it. So maybe that's the, the answer is put trellises. And I am not on that page right now, but I think for downtown purposes and that section, it also talks about blank walls, breaking them up because we, without the building, we don't have any of the architectural detail to fall back on that, that we rely on as community to make our, our community look like Brentwood. So there's that possibility. I realize that's going to cost a little bit more, but it's probably still cheaper than building a building. And if, the, the advantage of a wall is you could mount the lights inside on the wall and they would shine inward and they wouldn't be hanging up above where everybody would see them, they would be shining inward. And I would think that that would be sufficient for security purposes and to have enough lighting for the cameras or whatever they want to do in there. And again, if, if they, if they do a wall, we don't have any, we don't have anything to discuss here, we would just, because that's, that's, I'm just looking at a picture and if I saw something that looked like the guidelines, then I would have, have no problem with it at all.
Through the chair, if I might.
Yes, please.
Over here, actually. Thank you. There's obviously a lot going on tonight with this item. Understandably, there's some concerns about it. Just want to kind of circle back to staff is recommending approval, right? Subject to the draft resolution and conditions of approval. So there's a few options that the commission has. One is going with staff's recommendation and adopting that resolution, approving it as is, subject to conditions. The commission can certainly add or revise, add conditions or revise some of the existing drafted conditions. That could include referring parts of the item to the design review subcommittee for future review. There could be a motion made to deny the request, which would require staff to come back with a resolution memorializing the denial because we're not prepared to do that tonight. Or you could simply continue the item to a future meeting like we discussed earlier. The only thing I would say about that is if you do decide to do that, we'd want some pretty specific direction in terms of what aspects of the application you'd like to see revised so that we're not just working with the applicant in somewhat of a vacuum because there's been a lot of comments made tonight. So we'd want some more definitive direction on that. I think that's the extent of the options available at this point. Katie, if you can think of any others, please chime in, but I just want to make sure the commission was aware that there, there are some options at least to consider.
That, that last one is what we're trying to do right now is come up with some ideas so that we could, we could recommend them to you. And so I, you know, and I did hear Chair Roberts asking some questions, some informational questions, but I think for the most part, we just want to say what, what we think would be an improvement. And if we can get there, then we would be able to give you the recommendations that you're asking for and continue the item and that's, that's the idea of it.
Just a clarification question for either Eric or Katie. Chair Roberts asked, made a comment and a question about the maintenance of the golf course. That, we, we can clarify for me, can we make a decision on this based on how the golf course maintains the grounds?
So the current state of maintenance is not one of the criteria for you to make your decision tonight. The criteria for you to make your decisions are laid out on pages, I think 20 through 25 of the packet. Certainly, I understand you want to talk about it and I understand that, but the actual findings you need to make, look prospectively at the project that's being proposed, not the existing conditions.
Thank you. And then I would say Chair Roberts, the only concern I have about going out to see other courses is some of the courses that were referenced are private. And so I don't know that we would be able to get access to show you some of those. Certainly Shadow Lakes is public and just down the road and their maintenance yard is easily, you know, that, that's something that could be arranged as well if, if, if that was needed. needed.
No, well, there are quite a few golf courses that are public. They don't have to be in Brentwood. And as it relates to the maintenance, we spoke earlier about quality, and that's what I'm referring to, the quality in that community. And that includes how you keep that facility, the materials that are being used at that facility. So that's what I was referencing to. But sir, if, if it's okay with the commissioners, the gentleman would like to speak again. Yes, by all means, sir.
Thank you very much. And we have heard and appreciate the comments that have been made. The golf course has an interest, an urgent interest in getting an approval to move forward with removing those interim spaces. So the three areas have come down to, and if I'm wrong, I'm certain one of you or more, one or more of you will correct me, is the size of the facility. That's an operational determination. I'm not qualified to do that. You heard the current COO say the size is needed in order to accommodate the operational needs of the golf course. So whether it's today or six months from now, we will be saying the size is what's appropriate for the needs of the golf course. As to the other two items that you've been discussing, the lights, it's currently 24 feet, we could lower those if you were, if, if we could come to a consensus that there wasn't a height that would make you more, you feel more comfortable. We certainly could live with 18 feet, which would reduce them six inches. We think that would satisfy the needs of the golf course. We've also heard more than one of you talk about the size of the fence, refer to the mass there as a monstrosity. We would be willing to lower the height of the fence to seven feet in order to reduce the mass and the, and what the residents would be, would be looking at. It will be very difficult today or any time in the future for us to reduce this, the size of the, of the footprint because of operational needs. And I hope you can appreciate and respect that, that I'm not an expert either, Madam Chair. So I have to rely on the expert, and I've tried to badger him to see if we can do something about that. But he is insistent that the, that that amount of space is necessary to function efficiently as a, as a maintenance area. So again, in the spirit of compromise, we're willing to add that landscaping language around the entire fenced area. We're willing to lower the lights from 24 feet to 18 feet. Is that what I said before? I think so. 18 feet. And we're willing to lower this, the height of the fence from eight feet to seven feet. I hope that you can meet us halfway, or 75% of the way, or 33% of the way, and find a way to approve that this evening, because it is going to take some time for us to work with the consultants. We don't jump to the top of the line when we, when we talk to our engineer. We don't jump to the top of the line with an architect. They all have ongoing schedules, so it's going to take some time to complete that work and then work with staff to ensure that the interests of the city and this commission are being met, as well as the needs of the, of the golf course. So we would hope, in the interest of compromise here this evening, we could find a way to move forward with a vote with those modifications that the applicant has agreed to.
Commissioner Flor.
Yeah, that's, I would have to see what landscape all around looks like. And I think the lights could definitely be put inside on the walls of the fence instead of up above. I realize that would require more lighting, but it's just more lights. Lowering the fence from eight feet to seven feet from any appreciable difference is not going to be noticeable. I don't, I'm not really opposed to it being eight feet. I would just rather it was a wall. So I mean, this, this isn't getting me where I need to go, but I do appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Brand.
I mean, do we discuss the level of obscurity that landscaping provides versus the actual landscaping itself? Like, obviously, that's one item, the, the lighting height has been discussed. Are we at a point to discuss specifics, or what is, what? Difficult to discern here.
Well, one additional thing on the lighting, because I don't, Commissioner Flor, I don't know how this would affect your thought on it, is, so certainly the golf course, I don't know if the lighting would work the way you're asking, because, to some degree, because while the golf course obviously isn't open at night, the maintenance folks get there early in the morning when it's still dark to start their maintenance routines, right? And so that light is practical for them to be able to see what they're doing in the morning, right? So I think that, I don't know. And then also, if it stays a chain-link fence, I don't know if it's a, if it's possible to do what you're asking. Additionally, if it's changed to a stucco wall, which I think you, you're referring to, essentially, you're going to have a 100-foot stucco wall, which I'm going to ask, or someone else is going to ask for, I want that landscape, because I don't want just a 100-foot bare wall, right? With no articulation or massing right on it. So I think we're going to end up in the same spot, with landscaping is going to be the primary defense of the view from Somerset, too. And also, the, I think someone has mentioned a couple of times, the restaurant. The golf course, correct me if I'm wrong, golf course does not own the restaurant. Yeah, it's leased out. So just making sure everyone has the same information, if that's going to, you know, help. I think that, you know, their willingness to make the adjustments that they have is, is a great sign, right? They want to make it, the, the business work within, within Brentwood. I think the landscaping and the lowering of the lighting, as well as lowering of the fence, because you're, you're changing the massing of the fence as well, are great ideas that they're willing to do to make this work, so that, so that we can get this project going, should it pass here. Realizing it always can be, if it doesn't pass, it can be appealed or pulled for review, so they may not be done with it. But I think it's the, the changes that they're suggesting really will help some of the concerns I've heard tonight. I think the lighting lowering at eight feet is really going to, you know, the impact to the Somerset residents is going to be, it's already minimal, it's probably going to be zero, or close, as close to zero as you can make it with the lowering of eight feet. And then obviously, some of the additional planting that they're willing to do will eventually, will also absorb some of that light as well.
There's, there's nothing saying that that wall has to be flat. If it's a wall, it could be made a little bit architectural, there could be some pushouts and stuff. I disagree the lowering the light a few feet. It's six, is what I think he offered us. Maybe it was eight. I don't know. 18 from 24, I think that's six. I don't know. I think people will still see the lights. 18 feet is still sufficiently high. And, but I'd really, I'd really like to see it look like the picture that I see in front of me. The landscape all around, I would have to see what that's going to be. In fairly good detail, you know, trellises maybe, or plants. But it, the plants, it has to look really good. And, you know, otherwise, you're going to be looking at some plants in front of a chain-link fence, and I'm not sure that people are going to be happy with that, so.
Well, then what we could do from the landscape standpoint is if, if this passes tonight, you can always refer to the Design Subcommittee Review, which you're on to, so that you can select the plants. You and Commissioner Ziegler can select it to make sure that you're happy with the, with the plant selection for shielding.
Passing it tonight doesn't help me with making sure the public gets to see the new design.
Are there any further discussions on this? Hearing none, I will ask that somebody make a motion on this project. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'm not quite sure how to word it, but what I would like to, to move is that, as discussed by the commission, that we refer this matter back to staff with recommendations and for them to revise the design, bring it back forward in a future meeting where the public can be properly noticed, and the planning commission can reconsider.
Did you say you had conditions on that?
Yeah, just based on what the planning commission wants to do. We still haven't agreed on that part yet.
I'm seconding that. So just so staff understands, if this motion were to pass, then the item would come back to staff to work with the applicant, to revise the application. But I'm not quite sure, perhaps Sarah or Eric are, what exact provisions the planning commission would be looking for in that event. So if you could help explain that, then that would be of use to staff.
All right. I'll, I'll take a stab at it, but I don't feel like I have a consensus on the commission yet. We were asked for a motion. So I would say that it needs to be substantially compliant with the site planning guidelines, that the fencing would be replaced with a, an enclosure that matches Item 7 on page five of the Commercial and Industrial Design Guidelines. And that there would be no lighting extending above the facility, but that the lighting would be all interior to the facility.
What about landscaping? Could you mention that?
Yeah, if you look at the, the Item 7 that I referred, there is landscaping as well as a wall. And there, there are guidelines right there. Minimize visual impacts, maintain visual and sound buffers, integrate screen walls into the architectural design and landscaping of the building, utilize materials and details which are the same or similar. Chain-link fencing is not allowed. Provide landscaping to screen and soften the appearance. So I, I think their location is probably okay. I'm looking at, you know, C and D mostly there, but I think there's enough there that something could be devised. Or, you know, if, if you would rather, we could continue this to Design Review and let Design Review come up with the suggestions. But I'd like to make the motion as I made it first, that it would be, it would be, just to see if I can get three votes, if I could move it, so that the suggestion would be to make it compatible with Item 7 here on page five of the Commercial and Industrial Design Guidelines.
Through the chair, before we vote, I don't understand the motion, and I don't understand the impact if it's a yes, or, I think I understand what the impact is a yes. I don't understand the impact if it's going to be a no.
If you, if you vote no, we can make another motion to consider.
That isn't always how it works. So I want to make sure that we don't do something, have unintended consequences with this motion that I still not clear on.
Katie, didn't you mention a minute ago that if we wanted to bring this back, we had to be real specific about that, that we are going to be bringing back? Okay, and I think that's what he's trying to do.
Yeah, I did say that.
I think that's where we, I think that's where, that's what I seconded on, is that we had some very specific items that we'd like to bring back to the planning department, listening to what it is that council had mentioned as an option.
So where we are right now is that, as I understand it, we have a motion on the floor to refer the matter back to staff, to work with the applicant, to revise the proposed design, and bring back the revised design to the planning commission at a future meeting. Staff's work with the applicant should look to impose the requirements of Section 7 on page five of the Industrial and Commercial Design Guidelines. It should also ensure that there is no lighting above the height of the wall that would be negotiated with the applicant. That is the existing motion, as I understand it. Is that correct, Commissioner Flor?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so in the event that motion does not pass, then in this instance, the commission will not have taken any final action, and staff will look to you for another motion with another way to resolve this, this evening. Is that clear?
Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure before we voted.
That's, that's an important thing. I had no consideration that we might be blocking anything out. I just want to put it on the floor, if I can get a second.
So I voted in favor of, I made a second. So I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call on this.
Commissioner Flor.
Aye.
Commissioner Brand.
No.
Chairperson Roberts.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sparling.
No.
Commissioner Ziegler.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, I'd like to make another motion similarly, but instead of basing it on Item 7, I'd like to do a Design Review, and then the Design Review results would inform staff on the requirements. Otherwise, it's the same motion. Can I, can I do that, that way?
Is your motion to ask the Design Review Commission to meet, to consider the landscaping, the wall, and anything else, and then return to the planning, the full planning commission?
No, they would, they would return their request to staff, and then staff would work it up, and then return that to Planning Commission. So instead of, instead of saying, let's do Option 7, let's do Section 7 here, we would say, let's, let Design Review Committee come up with the options. And based on, you know, we'll know what the discussion was here tonight, so we could do it, and then pass that on to staff, or staff to revise the, the Design Review Amendment and bring it back.
So just looking at the description of your Design Review Subcommittee, it says, "This committee is designed to review minor changes to planning commission project approvals, refer to them by planning staff, as well as specific design elements deferred to the Subcommittee by the Planning Commission." So you're wishing to use it in that latter fashion? So this would go to the Subcommittee, then to staff, then back to the full Planning Commission? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's how I envision it.
Okay, I think we understand the motion. Eric, do you have any input?
Those are the same questions I was going to ask, actually, so thank you.
Okay. So I need a second.
Going to the Design Review? I'll second it. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Flor.
Aye.
Commissioner Brand.
No.
Chairperson Roberts.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sparling.
No.
Commissioner Ziegler.
No.
Motion fails two, three.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, of course.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-027 with the following additional conditions. Taking the lighting and lowering it to 18 feet, lowering the fence height to seven feet. I would like the landscaping to be all the way around the fencing to the agreement, I believe I can do this, through, at the Design Review Subcommittee level. We can, we can look at that, correct?
That's correct. So you'd essentially be deferring that portion of the project to the Subcommittee, correct?
Right. So making the following changes, the lighting height, the fence height, and adding the condition to send the landscape approval down to the Design Review Committee.
Second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Flor.
No.
Commissioner Brand.
Aye.
Chairperson Roberts.
No.
Vice Chair Sparling.
Yes.
Chairperson Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay. Okay, at this time. So congratulations. Okay, at this time, so congratulations, the motion carries. I believe that you will be in contact with the planning department, Design Review, on one matter, and that's it. At this time, I will look to the commissioners for any new, future agenda items. Do we have any? I'm seeing none. Informational reports? Commissioner Brand?
Last Transplant Committee meeting was canceled.
Okay. Design Review, Floyd and Commissioner Ziegler?
There have been no Design Review meetings so far this year.
Okay, there have been no land use, so that's that. And so now I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next planning commission meeting is on August the 15th, 7:00 PM, here at the City of Brentwood Council Chambers. Thank you. No problem, you're welcome.